I'd like to call the meeting to order. Why don't we start with a pledge of allegiance, please?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Great. Okay. So, our first item is that minutes from February 5th. So, has everybody had a chance to look?
Mm-hmm.
Any changes? Okay. So, could I have a motion to approve the minutes of February 5th?
So moved.
Uh, sec-
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. We have time for public comment. Matt? Okay. Good. So, reports for the school committee. Dr. Antonucci?
Yeah, I actually just want to say one quick thing and then I'm gonna have a lot to say just about coronavirus. And I'll do that as a lead into the first agenda item because it's pertinent. But I just do want to say for the record that for those who are looking ahead to the spring, our May 20th meeting is going to be rescheduled to May 27th. Okay? So, apologize to that. We had some conflicts. I had some conflicts. So, the originally scheduled meeting for May 20th is on May 27th. I think the website's probably already been updated, but we'll make sure we send out some communication too.
Great, thank you.
And then again, I'll come back to some other things for the first, at the first agenda item.
Great. Okay. Dr. Coleman?
Yeah, I just wanted to briefly share that we found out this week that we received a grant for $18,000 to work on supplementing our middle school computer science curriculum over the next few years. And so, it's gonna be, um, the grant was funding for some pre-planning, which is going to take place this school year. And apparently, the state had some extra funding along with that. So, in addition to that pre-planning group that we're gonna be training to develop a computer science plan for the middle school, they gave us an additional $6,000 to be able to purchase computer science materials and programs to kind of kick off that program. So, that was good news. It's a three-year grant, so when it's, will be the first year. This year is the training. So, I'll keep you posted with the plan that we developed and subsequent programming to enhance the computer science at the middle school, so.
Great.
So, is it 18 a year?
It's 18 for this year. That will include that coverage and the training for the team, as well as the $6,000 for materials. And then in following years, if we continue to be part of it and write that grant, we'll be able to add additional materials and programs.
Excellent. Sounds good.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Uh, Mrs. Blake?
So, I am going to defer my updates until the discussion item for the financial policies.
Okay. Great. Good. Right.
Alright, so, uh, the high school student council just traveled to Hyannis last week. And they went, um, it was a three-day leadership conference. It's called, for, um, the Massachusetts Association of Student Council. I went for two years. It's like such an amazing experience. And one of the members of our student council, Wes Moran, was elected as vice president, which is huge. And this is a conference with thousands of kids from all over Massachusetts. So, that's a really big deal. And it's good representation for Duxbury. We've had people on the board before, so that was good. And then this Friday, National Honor Society is hosting its putting-for-patience fundraiser in the gym. So, they're gonna transform the gym into a little mini golf course. They'll have games and face painting and a lot of fun for the little ones. And I saw the middle school had their faculty-student basketball game, which I think the students, I believe, took, yeah, took home a trophy there.
We're changing our hiring practice.
I was gonna say. Trying harder.
It seemed lots of fun. And then the middle school, or Alden, had their fifth-grade talent show, which they saw some pictures. It looked really, really fun. Good way to kind of get them all together bonding. And then, and they also had an author come in, Brian Lee's. And he did a great presentation, helped by the PTA provided. And then Chandler had their community reader day. And they had administration and police officers and principals. Everyone was there, it seems like, which is, seems like a great experience.
Okay, thank you. Good. I, uh, I don't think I have anything to report it, because it has to do with what you're gonna talk about. So, we'll just go from there, I think. Yeah. I think that's right. Okay. So, over to you.
Okay. So, the, um, I just want to, just I have literally one slide, but I just, just some talking points. I, I want to talk for a few minutes about the coronavirus COVID-19 outbreak and our, you know, the, the things that we're dealing with in the school department and at the town level. I, I don't even know where to be. I, I will begin somewhere, but it is, you can, I mean, it's consuming everyone. It's not, not just us, but it has really turned into a full-time job for the last couple of weeks. And, you know, I like to think we were in good shape, you know, relative to the other districts. So, I think we're ahead of it appropriately and we're communicating appropriately. But it is, it is changing by the moment. This is uncharted territory. It's the most fluid thing I've ever had to deal with in my career. And again, I mean, it's not a surprise. It's, it's everywhere. But I just do want to reinforce or reiterate some of the points that we've made in our communication to the community and then be glad to answer, you know, any questions or I'd love to hear your opinions on some of the things we're gonna talk about. I just want to start by saying, and really reiterate, that we are doing nothing in a vacuum here. We are in very close contact, constant contact with our town officials, including the town manager's office, health agent, and then very importantly, at the state level, the Department of Public Health, MassDPH. They are really, and they're doing a great job, but they, we are just taking as much guidance as we can from them. And that's, that's where I think we should be taking that guidance from. I mean, they are, they are the public health experts. But we, it is, like I said, it's a daily, it's daily contact. We were on a conference call two hours ago. There's really no new information day-to-day, or at least it hasn't been. But I just want you to know where, where on it. We have as much information as anybody has, you know, throughout the Commonwealth. And also say too, that we're in pretty organized collaboration response with other districts in the state, kind of driven by the Mass Association of Schools who are in attendance. So, everything from communication, you know, resources to, you know, Q and As and all kinds of advice, there's quite literally hundreds of things coming through the state and the state serve. And it's, it's overwhelming, but it's helpful at the same time. So, anyway, trying to kind of make that point. Let me just go into some things that we're thinking about. In the category of cleaning and disinfecting, as I communicate to the community, we've enhanced our cleaning and disinfection protocols. So, the district, this past weekend in particular, we had five extra custodial details. And their job is really to do a, for lack of a better term, a deep clean of the buildings, but also apply disinfectant to, you know, every surface possible, surface possible, you know, doorknobs, handles, desks, chairs. So, they spent, you know, between, probably hundreds of hours or certainly dozens of hours doing that. And I, we're not slowing that down. So, our custodians are well-positioned to make sure that, you know, we, we sanitizing is clean as well as possible. That shouldn't be a surprise, but I just do want to make that point. Under the category of hand washing and sanitizing, all we can do really is continue to reinforce with students and staff and the general community best practices in that area, you know, for minimizing the spread of germs. In addition, we've also installed, we had to purchase and install dozens of sanitizing stations at strategic locations throughout the district. You'll see those and they're being used. It is very, very hard to get products right now.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Very hard. Give Ryan Cherry, our facilities director, credit sort of, he had a guy that he worked with earlier this week and he was able to secure, secure some, whether or not we can get the replenishments, you know, time will tell. And we also distributed, pointing to it because it's a bottle of Clorox disinfectant wipes over there, but we deployed literally hundreds of containers into classrooms, as well as paper towels and other sanitizing and disinfecting agents. So, we're just trying to encourage people to, to do their best and to try to clean as many surfaces as possible. So, we're doing that. This is probably the most important topic, and that's a quarantine protocol. We've heard all about this throughout the state. And I, you know, to be clear, our families will be required to follow the quarantine protocol from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. We've asked, the really specific question, I think, that, that we've been asked and we want to talk about it is, well, a couple of things. But really, first, the protocols for members of a household who might be living with someone in self-quarantine. So, I'm gonna use this as an example because it's very relevant to all school districts right now. We have dozens and dozens of students coming home from studying abroad. A lot of the colleges have pulled students back from studying abroad. Those students are going to be coming back and living in, in their homes with their parents and their siblings. And so, we continue to ask the question that's been asked, it's been asked at every conference call we've had, what about the other household members? The guidance right now is that those household members are not required to also be in self-quarantine. So, is that, is that clear? So, even if you're living with a household member who's required to be in self-quarantine, those household members are not.
Unless anyone has symptoms.
Unless, the caveat is unless someone begins to show signs, show signs. And so, that, I, I don't know what else to tell you, but that is the guidance. That's the official guidance from the state.
Can I just clarify? So, someone who has not been tested, that would be required to self-quarantine, will have traveled to China, Iran, Hong Kong, Macau, northern Italy, or all of Italy, like what would, all of Italy now. So, only those five country, countries, if a returning student was in one of those five, would they be required to self-quarantine?
I, I'm sorry. So, the, the student, the student?
Because I think is, for example, if someone was in Paris, that wouldn't, that student wouldn't be required to self-quarantine upon return. It's just if they were in-
It's the, it's the countries that are what are called Level 3 countries for the State Department.
It's important to clarify that, because there are so many college students coming home that it's only if they were in a very limited number of countries. The most common might be for our students would be Italy.
Yeah. I think there's a lot of different messages out there, though. A lot of students who are coming home, even from the technically lower-risk countries, are being, are being told or asked either by their colleges or whomever to self-quarantine. So, but that is, that is a good point. Here's what I'm gonna say is, when we get information, and we've had several questions and calls of concern about specific people, and I want to come back to that in a few moments, we are just, we're, we're calling the Massachusetts Department of Public Health or asking the specific question. And that's what they're recommending. You know, we're not, I'm just telling you, we're not making any generalizations. We're not creating a one-size-fits-all approach. We're gonna go person by person, specific question by specific question. I don't know what else to do. I mean, to me, that is, that's the play. They have actually a 24/7 hotline, it's an epidemiology, epidemiology hotline. And our nurse leader, I'm pointing Kathy Carey, she's not here, but she's doing a great job. She, she's been in close contact with them all week. So, if we get asked, we also ask, and then we'll take appropriate actions.
Great.
That being said, in my most recent communication to families yesterday, I am urging families to voluntarily communicate with the school department if they have any questions about possible exposure of themselves or any member of their immediate household, or if they have concerns about possible symptoms, or really, any concern, you know, any concerns at all. We're just asking them to voluntarily, you know, notify us. Whether they do, you know, that's, that's a different conversation. But people have been calling. And I, I think, and I really, I really appreciate it. I think people are really using their heads. And we just, we're gonna continue to urge them to do that. But we are not, we don't have any formal authority or jurisdiction over that to require people to do so. So, all we, all we can do is ask. And I give a lot of credit to the Duxbury community. They're, they're asking. So, that, that's good. I, in my message yesterday, I thought this was really important. You know, all of this, you know, medical information, travel history, details about illnesses, it's, it's 100% confidential. We will not be, and I, and I know it's a struggle for some people to hear that, but we will not be and cannot by law share a lot of information. I also just think it's really important that we kind of adhere to our core values of, you know, having a strong community and being caring and empathetic. And so, really ask for people to just be careful about what they're, what they're posting online and that type of thing, because it gets, it's challenging out there. And I know people are nervous, but to the extent that they can ask us confidential questions, I think that'll go a long way towards making sure that our community has a kind of a level-headed response. It's not the most articulate way of saying that, but confidentially, confidentiality and privacy, I think, are most important. And I think we, as a community, I think we, our community deserves that. So, that's all I'll say about that. Big stuff here. Implications of school closure. And I, and when I say school closure, you know, we, we don't know what's gonna happen. Some schools have closed for a day here, you know, a day there. What I want to talk about just for a few moments is what will happen in the event that we have to shut down for an extended period of time, period of time. What is not an option as of today is any kind of distance learning or remote learning. Okay? So, the, and I also think it's, it's a really near possibility to do that pre-K to 12. We're certainly well-positioned to do some distance learning in grades maybe 7 through 12, even 6 through 12 a little bit. But it's far more challenging when you're talking about providing distance learning opportunities and kind of quality educational product at the elementary level. Either way, right now, it's not an option according to the State Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. The, the big question is always about extending the school calendar, you know, needing to make up days. And I, I really give the, the state a lot of credit. This is, the law, the law requires schools to have 180 days of school. I've been a school administrator for 22 years, and the only thing that they are adamant about is that 180-day rule. They never have waived it. They've never deviated until yesterday. So, what they're, let me see if I can say this. So, what they're, when you build a school calendar, you build your calendar for 180 days. And we're obligated to build an extra five days in for snow days. It's a weird little provision in the law. So, if you look at our school calendar, it has, you know, last day of school and then last day of school with five, with five snow days. The new guidance from the Department of Education that came out last night is that if you've maxed out your 185 days, okay? So, if you've hit that, sort of, the school year plus those extra five days, any cancellation after March 15th, which is Monday, or really beginning March 15th, any cancellation due to health-related, weather-related, do not have to be made up. Okay? So, for us, what that, what that means is that right now, if we had to use, if we, we've only had two cancellations. If we used another three, that would max out our five additional days. That brings us actually to Monday, June 22nd. Starting next Monday, if we have any cancellation, we will not need to make up those days. Now, we could make up those days. I don't want to imply that that's the best decision or not, but we don't have to make up those days. And that is a huge deviation from, from past practice with the state. So, and that's obviously a nod to the fact that things are, things were evolving and changing fast and there might be a, there might be a possibility that schools have extended closures. Does that make sense? Does that make sense? So, so that's another sort of state, you know, stay tuned on that. So, that, that really does help us.
Yeah. So, that means we won't anyway, because the 50, because we have three in the, we have three as a buffer, right? For three snow days that are available to us.
Well, we'd have to use, we'd have to use those, right? So-
But what I'm saying is like, if we, if we had, didn't have school tomorrow or the next day or whatever, then it's the 15th.
Right, exactly. Right, right. So, we're, yeah. So, the most, our maximum exposure is, is the five days. And so, June, June 22nd, as of today, would be the last day of school. Again, if we have to use three or more days the rest of the year. So, it's, I mean, again, I give the state credit. They're, they're trying to accommodate districts and be flexible. So, that's that. I, I think more pressing is, you know, we have several events planned, field trips. These are, we have a statewide drama festival. Kids are supposed to go to Bourne this weekend for a drama festival. We have concerts coming up. We have the Alden Science Fair a week from Saturday. You know, as of tonight, we haven't officially canceled any events. And I, I'd love to hear your, your opinions on it. I mean, we're certainly, we're certainly leaning towards at least considering canceling all, you know, all events in the near, in the near future, but we haven't made any decisions. The, the guidance, the guidance is really not that helpful, which is,
Do what you think.
Do what you think is the best thing for your community, right? So, I would love someone to tell me, you know, give me a more black and white answer. So, we're, I don't know, we're, I don't know what to say about that. We're just, we're wrestling with it. Love to hear your opinions if you, if you have any, any strong ones or not on that.
Well, I sent my daughter on the sixth-grade field trip today to Symphony Hall. They took a school bus. They were with their classmates. Symphony Hall had a short. They had done a deep cleaning.
Yep.
I mean, it's really, and I said to her what I say, every day that she gets home, go wash your hands, because they're on the bus or they're with friends, whatever. And, yeah, I don't know. I think a lot of schools are gonna start, are canceling the festival. So, it might be driven by who would attend anyways. So, I think it's gotta be more of a broader community response.
Yeah, I think, I'll go ahead.
I'm a very clear canceler. I just, the risk is too high from, from my perspective. There's too many unknowns about what's happening and what, how it's gonna roll out, so.
One of the challenges is like, we don't, you know, Danielle and I were talking about this extensively. That's all we talk about. Literally are. That's what we do know. You know, the, the tricky part is like, we only have the kids six hours a day, you know? And we don't really know what they're doing the other 18 hours. I mean, they go on supermarkets, they're going to Celtics games, they're going, you know, wherever. And so, it is, it is tricky to say, well, why would we restrict kids from going to BSO today? But who knows what they've been exposed? So, I mean, that is, but, to your point-
Whatever, whatever small thing we can do to prevent the spread.
If we can help control the situation, you know, we'll try and help control it. I don't, yeah, I don't disagree with saying that's what can we wrestle with this. Are we being extreme or, you know, irrational?
Well, to me, like, one thing that would be related to how I would look at making that decision would be in a, in a scenario where someone, God forbid, contracted it and we had to start canceling school. We know that regardless of how much school gets canceled, you're still done on June 22nd. But depending on when and the length of a cancellation, that effect, that has a direct impact on like outcomes for that year and then their preparedness for like the next grade. So, and we haven't talked about it, and maybe this isn't the night to talk about like what would be, and probably, we're probably not there yet mentally, but like if we had to do like a month off or something like that, what would we do, if anything? What could we do to continue to, to provide instruction, like online or whatever? Okay? So, to me, I would say cancel everything because that's an unknown. And if, God forbid, they went to the BSO and something happened, two things would, I think, occur. One is, you know, we'd be like, ah, we shouldn't have done that, you know what I mean? And then the other is, now that we've got to cancel school, what, what's the plan of action? And how quickly can we do on this? So, I would agree and just sort of cut as much risk just as possible. You know what I mean? Because I, because I'm still, it's unclear to me, like, what would happen if we had to take a month off?
It's the, it's the, can I, sorry?
Yeah, yeah.
It's also, it's the broader, it's the broader community caring. That, that, that's my focus. It's not, you know, when I think about it, it's stopping the spread for the broader community because, you know, our, our kids and our families, if they get it, and then they're out in the community and, and it's spreading, we don't know how it's spreading. So, it's, it's a, it's a bigger picture care, for me at least, that we take every step that we can to help, to help with that.
Yeah. You know, my, my perspective is, this is really a challenge for our state and our society because I, I have three college kids coming home, right? All, this has all been decided in the last two days, but higher ed, especially in Massachusetts, has universally said, you're done. You're not coming back. So, the challenge, I heard a statistic, a very high percentage of Massachusetts parents work in healthcare professions. So, the loss of six hours of time, now maybe Duxbury is more fortunate than many communities with a mix of two working parents and one working parent. But most communities will be very seriously impacted if all of the K through 12 students are home for an extended period. So, I think, I think this is gonna be the, the push-pull. And my, my recommendation is, just as a thought, is the kids are being exposed in our community to each other, to their families, you know, whether they're, you know, going shopping and what have you. So, I would say there is some distinction between exposure to each other, like they rode on a bus from Duxbury and went into an empty BSO.
Right.
Right? Nobody was there. It wasn't a, a concert with 3,000 people or something. So, I think the guidance is avoid large groups, especially if those large groups consist of people coming from all over the place. So, I would say if you filter those, a drama festival where kids are coming from all over the state, probably not great, because you're exposing our kids to all kinds of people from all over. But they're being exposed to each other every single day, you know? So, so you just have to wa, walk your way through it. But this is gonna put enormous pressure, you know, here and elsewhere if kids have to be out of school for an extended time period.
The college cancellations, you know, we were talking about this today. I mean, colleges can't send kids home, right? Because they're adults, effectively.
Well, and they not, they also have the online age restriction.
Right, right. But you're also sending 18, 19, 20, 21-year-olds home.
Right.
For us, sending, right, kids home where their parents have to go to work, I mean, it's a whole different-
It's a whole different, but the cancellation of school is different from canceling of school.
Oh, yeah, totally, totally. Yeah.
Yeah, 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 no. I think, just really interesting about the college thing was what I mentioned to you. There's an article online about the pandemic of 1918 and the impact on college campuses. It's fascinating. So, and, and a lot of people are making a parallel draw between this and that in terms of the overall impact. Just-
Yeah, I think- I shared my feedback. I mean, I think, keep doing what you're doing because the communication is so clear, thoughtful, non-biased, and, and very helpful to the families in the community. I wish our federal government was as effective, not making this classified and secret, right? Discussions now are being classified. So, just share the information that you can and keep communicating. You're really effective communicators, all of you collectively. So, so I think as a, as a parent, keep that coming. And you don't want to, you know, overly communicate because things are changing quickly, but just doing what you're doing is really, really super. And you're doing a really great job with that. So, I would, I trust you. You know? It's hard, hard, a hard position to be in your shoes. But, you know, just keep, keep advising people and keep soliciting input. Parents always have the option, if they're really concerned about any choice you make, to, you know, and try and also, you know, they've advised businesses to not make people take time off if they're concerned. The schools maybe should consider something similar, like unexcused absences should be, you know, kind of put on the shelf for a stretch if parents really feel it's better for their family to keep their kid at home. The schools should be accommodating to that, just for a period.
We had a meeting, yes, we talked about that. We said flexibility is key in this situation. I will say too, just on the employee side of it, Pat Don, our Chief Human Resource Officer, has been working with Gini Horn over on the town side. And they're, they're developing policies for the what-ifs for, for, for staff that might have to get sent, told me the implications of sick leave and all that stuff. So, they're being very thoughtful about it, very proactive. So, anyway, we want to just treat people the right way. It's important.
I would say with something like the science fair, I would probably cancel it now so the kids don't put their heart and soul into the projects and then-
Well, they shouldn't have worked on it for like-
Okay.
Okay.
Well, the other thing you could do is they could drop them off. They could be judged, just don't have a community event. Have teachers go in.
Well, the part of the judging is chatting to the kids about their-
Well, but it, but it might have to be different because the coronavirus is showing.
What are you talking about?
I'd rather not make a papier-mache stegosaurus. All the same to you, but thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Duly noted.
Yeah, we, yeah. It's funny, the, it's not funny that way, haha, but all these things, it, it-
it's not funny that way, haha, but it's, all these things, it, it, from, when I came in Monday, I sort of very ignorantly thought that things were slowing down a little bit. And I've never seen the last thirty-six hours have been insane. And really, the last twenty-four hours have been crazy. I, I was at a meeting last night and, yeah, there were a couple of colleges that had, that had canceled, and then look what happened today. I mean, so it's, these things, it's, it's real time. It's changing every second. So we, we know that we need to do, we need to make some decisions quickly to give people time, so. Hopefully the next day or two. All right, so appreciate your feedback. Um, we're doing our best with the information we have. And then the final piece, and this is actually the official agenda item, and I, and Jim Donovan's here. And I see Diane, I mean, he can pop in too. And there's actually, there's really not a, a ton to say about this, but I'm gonna start with international travel. You all, you all know this at, at this point, but that we had three different trips scheduled to go overseas for April break. We had one trip going to Italy. Totally in Italy. We had one trip that was set to begin in Italy, but then go to, I think, Germany, Austria, Prague, I think. Um, and then we had one set to go to Paris. Unfortunately, um, three different trips, three different travel companies, you know, three different tour companies. We had started talking about kind of what ifs. Jim, you're welcome to come up here, and Diane, if you're interested. Just, do you wanna come up? You, you don't have to, but join the conversation. But, um, so the, the, we, we started talking about it a couple, a couple of weeks ago. And then you saw probably that the governor came out and recommended that schools just cancel all international travel. So I just wanna report to you that we are canceling all international travel. It's all tricky. I wish I could have, um, I wish we had the time to come before the school committee and ask you for, for a vote, because you actually, you approve the trips. Um, but in the interest of time, we just had to make an executive decision and, and we are canceling, we are canceling the trips. And I think we officially let families know yesterday or today, Jim?
Yes, today.
So the, the real big challenge, and this is not an action item for tonight, and it's just something I think people should know. You know, all of our families had paid for these trips. And we are struggling with the tour companies to secure full refunds for our families. What I can tell you is that Duxbury is not alone. Uh, in fact, this thing has blown up in, in the state this week. I actually got my, I weaseled on, onto this little working group with what, six or seven superintendents to, to, um, kind of go after, I don't mean that, I don't mean that in an aggressive way, go after EF, which is one of the largest tour companies, who's being, in my opinion, the most unreasonable with their refund policy. So a letter went out today to EF that was signed by hundred superintendents, you know, so just about, about that. My pitch to these tour companies is basically like, we bought a product. And the product we bought was a trip to, say, Italy in April twenty twenty. You can't deliver that product, and so we want our money back. The contracts, you know, it's really tricky for us, because the contract officially is really between the family and the, and the tour company. Some, some families purchased insurance. Some families purchased different levels of insurance. And so their, their, their policies differ depending on kind of what tier of policy you have or don't have. I'm only just telling you, it's something that Jim and I are working on. And we're, for lack of a better term, we're being aggressive about it. I mean, I, I am really upset actually by it. I, uh, I'm employing these companies to, my words are, kind of do the right thing. They're also probably on the verge of bankruptcy.
Right.
Um, it's not just Massachusetts, I mean, it's the entire country. Um, and so we're working through that. I don't really have any, the deep, I don't want the details aren't important, but there, there's so many details and it's still, still evolving. We, we've made headway, right, Jim? I mean, we've made great progress with them?
Yeah, I'm, we have, um, John and I have met, or we've been on conference calls with the, you know, the, uh, presidents or vice presidents of, of each of these companies, uh, over the last week. We have, uh, two of the three companies have actually improved their refund policies over the last ten days to the benefit of our students, uh, which we are, uh, appreciative of. Um, and get our students closer to being whole, uh, which we are, we are definitely happy about. Uh, we have meetings set up tomorrow evening with all three sets of parents and kids who are, uh, on all three trips. And, uh, and we have numbers for all of them. And we're gonna begin that process. And some trips have, uh, diff- the problem is each company has different options. And so, uh, some parents are gonna have, um, better options, I would, I would say, or different options than others.
No matter, no matter what, our parents, it does not look like they're gonna get a full cash refund, no matter the circumstances. What they're kind of offering, it's, again, it's better, it's improved over the last week and a half, is some combination of a cash refund and then a voucher for future travel. Now, it's likely that if you're an underclassman, that there'll be a legitimate opportunity in the future to go on another trip. It's very difficult for our seniors who, uh, obviously graduate from Duxbury and may or may not have an opportunity to, even in col-, you know, in college, to use a voucher. The vouchers are transferable. And so it's possible that, you know, we'll, we'll set up a little black market or something for, uh, or just a white market, um, if that's a word for, uh, you know, but we can help our families with tho- with those transfers if, if we have future, uh, future travel.
Would that be just to a sibling or?
No, it could be anybody. We could, we could theoretically, the vouchers could be sold to another town.
Yeah, except if the company goes bankrupt, then the voucher's worthless.
Yeah.
And the, um, you know, one of the things that all of the companies really offered to us from the outset was the opportunity to defer the trip, postpone it, either later this school year or the summer, or in the fall. And those were, uh, commitments that John and I were unwilling to make. Um, obviously, we kept saying, we can't make it without your approval.
Right.
And, uh, the parents of the students involved get to say that as well. And so that was not something we were willing to commit to, um, in any of these discussions.
So, had I, uh, oh, go, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna ask a detailed question. Did everybody pay by credit card?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Because I had a similar, I had a similar problem, um, earlier this year. But I had paid my deposit for my trip by credit card. So when the trip was canceled, or actually, the credit, uh, the tour company went bankrupt, all I had to do was contact the credit card company and give them evidence of the bankruptcy. So I'm wondering whether, if, if school committee or the administration cancels the trip and the customer is paid by credit card, whether they can resort to their credit card company and say, it's out of my hands, this happened. I, I'm not getting my product, therefore I'm due a refund on my credit card.
That's a good question.
So it's worth pursuing.
Yeah, so my son went on the February EF trip and he had to pay cash.
Okay, okay.
And are some families doing payment plans? Which they're probably still having to make payments towards, even though right now the trip isn't happening.
Okay. So it might be worth inquiring if anybody paid by credit card, because that's, there's, you can, you could possibly resort to that for some families.
So, yeah, this was, uh, really a, a comment directed to us, right? The school committee. John advocated for purposes of quality, safety, and kind of overall integrity of our travel program to take on the responsibility. That's an enormous service to our parents and our community. They've shown that they're very mindful of the, the loss and hurt that this could cause many of our families. But I just think all of us need to be prepared, if we get inbound, to say, look, the school took this on to maintain quality. The state Commonwealth of Massachusetts declared a state of emergency today. There are thirteen other states that have declared an emergency. Most commercial contracts have force majeure, like act of God. Clearly, this is not something that our administrators should be expending undue amounts of effort towards. I think you're doing a tremendous effort, but don't get consumed by this. And we have to have their back, because it's not ultimately the best use of our leadership's time to devote the kind of time and resources necessary to battle, you know? You have, you have a collective power. Any individual power, parent would have been in much worse shape two years ago if the contracts were just between them and the travel company. So you're exerting influence, you've advocated with other superintendents, you sign, so, signed a petition. If they catch flak, we have to have their backs. That's all that's up to us, because, yeah, this is terrible. And the consequences for anyone who's in this position is bad. But you also, you have a lot of, uh, you have a lot of fish to fry, a lot of challenges they have to manage. And just do the best you can. Also, don't get overly consumed by it, because it could be the kind of thing that could get your parents wrapped around the axle that are impacted by this. So I, I just wanna say, if we get inbound, this is the case, I feel very confident to just say, hey, we took this on for the very reason of not having, outside the school district. But at the same time, there's only so much that we can do to really kind of, you know, all this stuff is really out of our control. So that's all. Don't, you know, don't attack yourself, Jim, over this. Cause you know, it's, you don't want, you, you don't wanna let any parent down. But at the same time, you know. Just, just give some context. I mean, the, the EF, the EF letter that went out today is also being sent to the Attorney General. They're, they're, I mean, so that's how, this is not a Duxbury thing, is what I'm gonna say. It's a pretty, it's a pretty big deal throughout the state, so. Yeah, Jim and I, we're giving it the old college try and, uh, we'll keep working, but I appreciate that. Yeah, yeah. And maybe preemptively, you know, leverage your communication skills to preempt the inbound and just communicate to those parents.
Well, Jim, we have, yeah. All, all, all the parents of, and students were, um, uh, we communicated with them last, uh, week ago, Monday. So, uh, the, the, obviously there were concerns at that point, no one could travel to Italy anymore. Uh, we were exploring our options. And then we, um, communicated with everyone today. We have parent meetings set up for tomorrow.
Great.
So.
The, the other thing, just final piece on this is, um, that was international travel. We also, uh, had a, had a scheduled, um, drama trip to New York City in early April. Uh, and we notified families today that that was going to be canceled as well. And, and, again, they're working through the refund policy for that too. So it's, I, I really feel bad for the kids. I mean, it's really, it's really disappointing. But it's, it's where we are right now as a society, so.
Well, and following on what Peter said earlier, I think it's important that we prioritize keeping the schools open. So where we have kind of more discretionary travel, that's not directly related to learning, where they're encountering large groups of students from other parts of the state or other states. You know, it's just, it's adding to the risk level. And if the impact of doing such a trip is that we end up shutting down the schools for a couple of weeks, that's, to me, quite a big price to pay. So, I mean, that, that, those types of considerations are important.
John, has there been any, um, discussion on MCAS?
Not, not yet.
Cause it's coming up?
Yeah, that is, uh,
I think ELA is the end of March.
The state knows that's a huge, huge question for a lot of people.
Right now, it's upon us, scheduled.
Yeah, isn't it the end of March for high school? ELA coming up?
The other, the other really important one too is, um, in terms of actual extended cancellation is the AP. Cause that's, you know, if we, if we lost, for example, two weeks of, I mean, losing two weeks of instruction anywhere is obviously not good. But it's even more pressing for kids who wanna take, you know, the AP. But then again, this is, we won't be alone, you know, it's, the entire country's going through the same thing. But those are things we need to figure out in the next few weeks.
Thanks.
So that's it. I really appreciate your questions and feedback, and it's very helpful and support. And, uh, you know, I, I would just say this, anybody with questions, please send them our way. You know, I'd rather, I'd rather, rather answer a question on the phone or by email than.
Not on Duxbury, helping Duxbury?
No, I was, I was not gonna say that, but, um.
You know, it's my favorite.
Thank you for pointing that out. It's not the, uh, it's not a very reliable source of information.
Today I learned, don't bleach your vegetables.
Well, I see it, that's, that's good.
I'm sorry.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so tonight we'll be reviewing two policies, um, one of which is an existing school committee policy, which is policy, uh, DJE, uh, bidding requirements. And the other is the draft financial policy in regards to the special education, um, reserve fund policy. I also have a recommendation to update the mileage reimbursement rate and the policy based on a recent change that was made by the town of Duxbury and approved by the Board of Selectmen. So the first policy that I wanted to review tonight is the school committee policy, DJE, which was last amended in twenty fourteen. And so at that time, the purchasing or procurement thresholds, um, were set to the following. So under ten thousand dollars, sound business practice, so we don't have to go through any formal, um, bidding or request for proposal. Um, from ten thousand dollars to thirty-four nine ninety-nine, um, we were required to, um, reach out for three written or oral quotes for purchases. And for thirty-five thousand dollars and up, we were required to, um, procure for sealed bids or proposals. So that's, um, the policy that's currently in place, it's based off of those thresholds. So there are some references to the thirty-five thousand dollars, um, and, um, reaching out for bids. So with the enactment of the Municipal Monetization Act in twenty sixteen, the thresholds were modified so that the sealed bids, so the highest purchasing level, um, were required for purchases over fifty thousand dollars. So as I mentioned at the last meeting, um, we're in the last year of our contract with our food service provider. So we're currently in the process of going through, uh, the request for proposal. So throughout that process, as I was going through and reviewing some of our, uh, financial policies, school committee policies, I just noticed that this policy was somewhat outdated. Um, and then just referring back to the state level policies with purchasing under, uh, Mass General Law thirty B, um, the thresholds are different. So in order for us to, um, bring our policy more into line with what was amended in twenty sixteen, I just have the recommendations to tie it back to that current state policy and those thresholds and to make the amendments, um, as I noted in the mem- in the memo. So just, um, just a quick summary of some of the changes to the policy, as I had referred to. Um, in the current paragraph one, it just makes reference to, um, all purchases for any of our materials and equipment for any contracts with construction or maintenance. And the amount exceeding thirty-five thousand dollars would be based upon that competitive bidding. And so, um, my recommendation is that we make an adjustment to have that update, updated to all purchase of materials and equipment for the contracts or for construction or maintenance would be based upon competitive bidding or proposal in accordance to the thresholds defined by Mass General Law. So just if we refer back to the current Mass General Law, and that includes too, it makes reference to, um, Chapter thirty B for supplies and services and Chapter one forty-nine, which is building construction. Um, it allows us to just refer to kind of the level set by the state. And it becomes, um, more fluid if there are, in fact, changes made by the state. And then just, um, another modification that I had listed in the memo was, um, the second paragraph. And it, again, just made a reference to that thirty-five thousand dollar amount. Um, and to be consistent, the recommendation is to, um, update that for all purchases in excess of the fifty thousand dollar amount. And that is, um, and then I also, it's not specified in the policy, but I also included in the memo, uh, information of what the thresholds are now currently. So it's the less than ten thousand dollars is the, still the sound business practice. Ten thousand to the fifty thousand amount is the three written quotes. And then, of course, over the fifty thousand dollars is, um, soliciting the request for proposal. And then, of course, over the $50,000 is soliciting the request for proposal or the, um, bid process.
Okay.
So the second policy, um, that I wanted to review briefly, we had, um, brought this up as a draft and we were able to have a conversation, um, at a prior school committee meeting. Um, but John and I did have the opportunity to meet with the town manager and the town finance director and review the policy as well. Um, and they just had two, um, adjustments that they had recommended that we make to the policy. So I just wanted to update you with those, um, changes that we had. So the first one was around the targeted funding floor. Um, and so in the original draft that I had presented, we said that the floor would be $100,000. So the amount doesn't change. But we had originally, um, referenced a date of July 1st. And that was more consistent with the fiscal year. But as we, um, discussed the policy with the Special Education Reserve Fund, that funding is effective immediately after the majority vote at town meeting. Um, so the recommendation or our thought was to update that date to April 1st. And it just eliminates that few month gap where we might have some changes or need to make some, if we ever had a situation where we might potentially need to use some of the funding in the account. So it just makes it, um, a little bit of an easier, and I think just makes more sense to have the date listed as of April 1st. And then the, the second update was just an addition with just some language around the, the process of, um, utilizing the reserve fund. Um, and the note is that we will not make any encumbrances. So just encumbrances being in our financial software. We're not going to make any commitments on spending in those particular funds and those account numbers until the approval is received from, um, the school committee and also from the Board of Selectmen. So we have to go through that approval process, receive their approvals, and then we can go into the financial system and make those, um, payments through our financial software.
Could you just run through what the process would be if the, if funding in the, in the Special Education Reserve Fund falls below 100,000? Is that what the target funding floor is, that the balance in the fund is below 100,000?
Yeah.
So if that happens on April 1st, what, what would the town do? Town meeting's already happened, but.
Well, the reason it's April 1st is because presumably you'd have, you'd have fallen below, before town meeting, say.
Right, okay.
Right, and so the, to answer the question, the process would be at town meeting.
Right.
Town meeting would have to, um, replenish the fund, yeah.
To at least the $100,000.
So what happens if it goes out in August? Wait for the next year?
You have to wait till town meeting. You always have to wait till town meeting to technically replenish it anyway.
But the thing is, it's still subject to the vote at town meeting.
Right.
The town, uh, town could decide, oh, 75's fine, and you have to live with it. It's not a guarantee that they'll, it's sort of a recommended minimum.
Yeah, it's tangible, yeah.
Right, okay. I would have picked March 1st, but just cause I.
Well, town meeting's after that, so we just.
Right, so if the, if, if on March 1st, the balance is below $100,000, then it gives you two weeks for town to put the money from special, from, um, in the special town meeting, because it'll be from free cash, right? Where the extra money comes.
You would have to, I guess, yeah.
So I'm just, it just seems like a weird timing, unless I don't understand the process at all.
The, the idea is that by, as of April 1st, you'd have have to make a, make a move.
Right.
So.
Oh, I see, okay, yes, right, got it.
Not, right, not the other.
Right, okay, so, yeah, I understand it now, it was, yeah, understood. So they do a balance check before then, right, got it, okay, thank you.
And then the last item is just the mileage reimbursement. So on Monday, February 3rd, the Board of Selectmen, um, approved the Duxbury Municipal Vehicle Use Policy. Um, so an important update contained, contained in the policy was the modification of the mileage reimbursement rate, um, which represents a reimbursement to employees for work-related mileage while using their personal vehicle. Uh, the rate will now be consistent with the IRS mileage rate, uh, which for 2020 is 57.5 cents per mile. And so my recommendation is in an effort to be consistent with the town's policy, um, I would recommend modifying our current reimbursement rate to also be the IRS mileage rate. And so just for, um, some context with the mileage reimbursement rate, we've had, um, the rate that we're currently using, so the last rate change by the Board of Selectmen was back in, um, 2011. And at that time, the recommendation wasn't, was not brought forth to the school committee to, to make a change. So, um, we've had the, the current reimbursement rate for, um, an extended. So I'm not, I, and don't know the date that it was initially effective, but it has been.
Basically.
A period of time. So, and, and it's just for the consistency, I think it would be, um, beneficial for us to be in line with the town.
Yeah, yeah.
And Katie, what are some examples of people getting mileage reimbursement?
So, um, if an employee were to go to a conference that was out of district, they could, um, put in for a mileage reimbursement. And that's generally the, the most frequent reimbursement that we see.
But not if they take a class or?
No, if they're on.
So it's conference, okay. Thank you.
Great, okay, thank you. Do we want to, we don't have these done as an action item, do we want to put that on the agenda for next?
Yeah, just because of the sort of technically a first reading, so we'll do it, yeah.
Okay, okay, great. Any comments about policy? Okay, great.
Super clear presentation of the alternative, you know, compared to what we're recommending, so that's great.
Okay, great. So, uh, Dr. Klingman, student opportunity plan.
All right, so in your packet, you should have a copy of the short presentation that Katie and I are going to go through tonight. So the Student Opportunity Act, we've been hearing a lot about over the past year. And the Student Opportunity Act requires districts to submit a three-year evidence-based plan to the Department of Education by April 1st. Um, these plans have to be approved by school committee and also need to include stakeholder, stakeholder feedback. Um, so the plans need to identify specific evidence-based programs that the district intends to implement to reduce disparities among student subgroups. The plans also need to, um, provide an explanation of the relationship between the allocation of the funds and the educational needs of the English learners and low-income students. We need to establish targets and outcome measures for addressing disparities in achievement among our student subgroups. And we need to show that we are, um, providing opportunities to engage families and measure family engagement outcomes. So these SOE plans must include stakeholder input and be approved by local school committee. And so the interesting part of these plans is the budgetary impact of them, which Katie is going to go through on the next couple of slides.
So I just wanted to walk you through, um, the calculation and the method that the state uses in order to, um, determine what the, um, the state or Chapter 78 is going to be. So, um, and this is actually information, I took this from, uh, the DESI website. They have, um, an informative PowerPoint that details out all the different, um, areas of the foundation budget, the, the rates, how the rates have been modified through the Student Opportunity Act. And I think this slide really, um, does a nice job of a pretty straightforward summary of kind of a, a complex process, um, that goes into calculating these rates. So, um, I just want to walk through the steps that they take, um, to determine each one of the district's Chapter 78. So the first step is to define and calculate the foundation budget for each district. And that's given the specific grades, the program, and the demographics. So as Danielle had mentioned, um, they're now giving more weight to districts that have a high number of, um, low-income students or, um, EL students. Uh, so that's one of, or two of the, uh, significant changes that have come with the Student Opportunity Act. And so underneath the summary, I did include, um, the budget numbers for Duxbury for fiscal year 21. So the foundation budget number is that $31,43,750. So then, um, the next step is to determine the equitable local contribution requirement. So that's how much of that foundation budget that the local, um, towns or districts are required to contribute towards that, um, the foundation budget. So Duxbury's fiscal year 21 required local contribution is $25,6194. And so with that required local contribution, it's capped at 82.5%. So through that calculation, our number is capped at the 82.5. And that is the 82.5% of our foundation budget.
Can I, can I, um, interrupt? Um, do you know how many communities in the Commonwealth are capped at the, uh, maximum contribution?
I don't have the number, I can find that out for you.
Cause that basically says, Duxbury is considered one of the most affluent communities in the Commonwealth and pays the maximum share. There's been debate, debate internally and also in the community about our relative affluence and relative contribution for school funding. I'm just interested to know how many other communities are at the max.
I can definitely look into that. And they do, um, all of the information that's provided to us, you can filter through it for each one of the communities. And so it does walk you through, they have a very detailed calculation of how that local contribution is reached. And so when you do look at the underlying details, um, our local contribution through that calculation is around 84%. But because we are, we're capped at the 82.5%, so that $25 million is the, the most that we can do as the local contribution. And so after that second step, that's, um, where they then go and calculate the state aid. So the state aid is essentially your foundation budget minus your local contribution. And that's, um, the foundation or local state aid. And that's that $5,432,656. So the, um, the important part for this formula is that the local contribution and the state aid has to equal or exceed the district's net school spending number. And that is the, the net school spending is the requirement. That's the minimum amount that the district must spend to comply with the state law. And so our required net school spending number is listed down there at the bottom, and that's $31,81,750. So our required net school spending actually exceeds what our foundation budget calculation is. And because of that, we receive a minimum aid adjustment of the $37,750. So our Chapter 78 is a, uh, um, is the total of our foundation aid. So the $5,432 plus the minimum aid adjustment increment, the $37,000. So the total state aid is $5,470,406 for fiscal year 21.
Can I just clear?
How's the required net school spending, where's that number come from?
That comes from the, um, end-of-year reports that we have to submit. So when we submit all of our financials that, um, detail out what we've spent as a school, what we've spent as a town, and then they go through and they take, um, the spending at the, there's an accounting series that they use. And that's the number that they say is our required net school spending.
It's based on the number of students and the number of students in certain categories and.
So that's the foundation budget number. But the net school spending requirement is actually the amount, um, the spending that we are reporting to the state through that end-of-year report. They make a calculation, yes.
And make a calculation off that.
Yeah, based, based off of certain categories as we report them into the state.
Okay, thank you.
Can I, yeah, can I, no, I can't help myself, but, here we go, here we go. It's, are you saying by the formula of the Department of Education, Duxbury is spending $37,000 more than the absolute minimum required by law in the state?
No, we're spending much more than that because we spend more than the required net school, school spending.
We do.
We spend, our budget is 38, 9.
It's a 36 something, but we actually.
So the foundation budget is not our budget, it's, it's what the county. All right, misunderstood.
Cause, so every community has to spend the required net school spending. But then, um, communities can add on top of that, so we're one of the communities that does.
So maybe that's something we should add to the slide to show what our actual spending is.
I was gonna say, it would be interesting to do analysis though, because I, I can assure you just anecdotally that the delta between our net school spend, required net school spending and what our budget is, you know, is less than some of the higher performing districts.
That's right.
Yeah, that's interesting. By the way, Peter, that 82.5 is about, it's about 20% of districts are at that kind of max.
Right, so top 20% of affluence, right, right. So it's consistent with like average per capita income, medium income, medium home values.
Yes.
There's another metric that says we're in the top 20.
Well, that's gonna change with the construction in town and demographics and, not next year, but, but it'll be interesting to see how it fluctuates.
And so this slide is just the, um, the detailed calculation and all of the numbers. And it also provides a comparison to fiscal year 20. So you can see what the Chapter 78 was in fiscal year 20. And then it also, um, shows that total number for fiscal year 21. You can also see it makes reference to that minimum aid adjustment that I just talked about previously. Um, and that $37,000 is just the difference between what our foundation aid would have been originally based off of the foundation budget and then what the foundation aid is, um, if we are spending to our net school spending number. And then, so I also want to just, um, reference, so the change number in the Chapter 78, that's, um, 129,871. And so, um, sometimes there'll be reference of the $30 minimum. That's the $30, um, the minimum increase over the past fiscal year. They set the minimum at a number per student. And so this year it was set at $30, it's been $30, I believe it was $30 last year. Um, and so when the numbers are reported, so they take the change and then they, um, divide that by the enrollment number. So our change per student from fiscal year 20 to fiscal year 21 is $45 per student. So I just wanted to, um, make some reference to that.
Thirty per student, is that the number that, that they've got increased in the last couple of years? Or is that a different number?
Last year we did get the minimum increase, the $30 per student.
Is that the year where it went up to like 54 or something?
It depends on the, I don't know specifically, but, I mean.
I'm just trying to make sure of the lining.
Katie, I don't know if you're gonna say this.
Understand the process.
But basically this, Katie does a brilliant job explaining this, but as far as the Student Opportunity Act, which is what we're really talking about tonight and our requirements for it, there was about a $1.4 billion increase in Chapter 78 in the, in the state. It was a wonderful initiative that took a long time to get passed. 85% of those dollars went, uh, what is it, 85% of those dollars went to 35 districts. We basically in Duxbury got nothing, so, right?
But I think that was the intent of that.
No, it's fine, I just, so yeah, it just, I want to be, I mean, it was a great initiative, raised the bar all throughout the state, but the Duxburies of the world virtually got nothing. Yeah, we still have some, some statutory requirements as a result of that, so. So, I'm sorry, did I make the jump in?
No, and I think it's just, um, when we look at the numbers, we're essentially, so if we look at our foundation budget and the calculation to the foundation. so if we look at our foundation budget and the calculation to the foundation budget, it's below what our required net school spending is. So if we were only looking at that foundation, we would essentially be getting just thirty-dollar increase. But because we do, are, we're required by law to spend the net school spending, that's what kind of um gave us that additional funding per student. So I think um that is kind of telling that we're not even, for what we are spending, um, we're not, the foundation budget did not even bring us up to that level, so.
So the financial part of that is the interesting part. What I'm going to be presenting is nothing new. So despite the fact that we really aren't seeing an increase in our um funding from the state because of the Student Opportunity Act, we fall into the category of um districts receiving less than one-point-five million dollars, which we're way less than one-point-five million dollars.
We're really.
So the, the Duxberrys of the world need to fill out a short form, and anyone that received over one-point-five million, and some districts received as much as thirty million dollar infusion of funds, they need to do a long form, and so they have to do a little bit more of an elaborate plan than we do. And so what the commissioner asked um school districts to do that fell into that category of receiving the lesser amount of funding would be to complete that short form. So with that short form, luckily for us, it fit into a lot of the initiatives that we were already um had underway due to our strategic plan. And so I'll just go through kind of the summary of the short form. And so presenting it to you, and we're also going to be presenting this to our school councils and our PTAs and just getting stakeholder feedback if there's anything that we can add or supplement to the plan. So the um Student Opportunity Short Form asks districts to make four commitments, and the four commitments are listed. Intentionally focus on student subgroups. Adopt, deepen, or continue specific evidence-based programs to close opportunity and achievement gaps. Monitor success in reducing disparities in achievement among student subgroups. And engage families, particularly those representing student subgroups. So the first commitment, focusing on student subgroups, asks what's, which student subgroups will require focused support to ensure all students achieve at high levels in school and are successfully prepared for life. So that we um have prioritized targeting our students with disabilities subgroup, which we've talked about in depth through our MCAS analysis and just recommendations from strategic planning that we'd like to see our students with disabilities um performing closer to our students without disabilities on standardized testing and assessments that we administer in district. So we selected this subgroup based on achievement data from MCAS testing, district assessments, and analysis of our service delivery. Our strategic plan, which is running from two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty-two, outlined an ambitious plan to close that achievement gap of our students with disabilities in reading. And as a district, we have prioritized improving reading instruction supports for students as well as providing professional development to all staff in reading across content areas. So the second commitment, using evidence-based programs to close these gaps. So what programs will we, um, will our district adopt, deepen, or continue to best support the closure of achievement gaps? And what resources will we allocate to these programs? So again, this is not anything new that we'll be implementing, but it's some um different programs that we have underway. So we have a commitment to provide our special education teaching staff with research-based training in a specialized reading approach, which we've identified as Horton-Gillingham, and we've already started to train many of our special education teachers on this program, which is an expensive um commitment that we've made, but we believe it will pay off in dividends with our um student achievement in reading. So the reason we selected Horton-Gillingham, because it's direct, explicit, multi-sensory, structured, sequential, diagnostic, and prescriptive way to teach literacy while, when reading, writing, and spelling does not come easily to individuals, such as those students with dyslexia. I don't know this little box that popped up on the screen. Um, we will continue to utilize, we use federal Title I grant funding to um support our um reading intervention programs, and we purchase programs such as Lexia. And we're always looking for um additional programs that we can have um to support our students with intervention. And we are also committed to providing professional development to our teachers across the district um to improve their ability to assist struggling, struggling readers. What metrics will we use to monitor success in reducing these disparities? So um DESI has um identified outcome metrics that we can select from. So we'll be using our ELA-MCAS achievement and student growth data as well as benchmark assessment data that we have in districts such as Star Reading and Ames Web, which are benchmark assessments. We will also use informal assessment data, percentage of our special education trust staff trained in Horton-Gillingham, and so we have a three-year plan to be able to um do that within our school budget. We'll continue to do an analysis of service delivery, which, what we mean by that is we want to see as many students as possible receiving their reading instruction in their general classroom setting and not pulling students out to be seen outside the classroom unless it's absolutely necessary. And we'll continue to determine whether the professional development that was provided was successful in um providing student support and additional reading instruction strategies. And finally, how will we ensure that our, our families, especially those representing student subgroups, have the opportunity to meaningfully engage with the district regarding student needs? So I mentioned that before, we'll present this plan at school committee. Um, and the plan is written, the complete plan is in the folder for, for this evening, and we'll share the complete plan at the CPAC, school councils, and PTA meetings. We'll continue to engage our stakeholders at other events throughout the year if there's feedback or additional supports that we can recommend. So we'll be submitting the short form plan, which again is in your folder, to the state by April first, but we will still continue to accept feedback and recommendations if there's anything that our stakeholder groups um share with us even after we submit the plan. So we're hoping it's a working document over the next three years. And it shouldn't be any new information, these are all things that we identified and prioritized during the strategic planning process, but again, it fit in with that short form requirements for focusing on a student, particular student subgroup.
At our level of funding, which is.
Minimum?
None. The um, the commissioner, I saw him speak twice on this, Danielle was in one of the meetings. I was at a different, another one as well, and he acknowledged um that there are many districts in the same position as we are. But it was a, this, uh, student opportunity plan is, is a requirement by the legislature. And so he said he would not be surprised if districts like ours submitted their student opportunity plans uh filled with things that they were already doing. I mean, he actually used those words. So we're very fortunate, I think, that we just came off the strategic plan process and that we had had these very specific interventions that we were working on. So it's not a surprise, should be a surprise to us that you see a lot of that, that same information just in this um, you know, document. And it's a bit of a compliance exercise, we took it very seriously, it deserves, it deserves to be taken seriously, but it.
If we were getting additional funding, we would have presented to you the thoughtful way we'd be spending that funding to make sure that we were closing the achievement gap. But we didn't get any additional funding, and we have a limited budget moving forward this year. And so luckily for us, we had a number of um initiatives that we already had in place that have a cost to our operational budget, so we've already prioritized those. And so that's why you're not seeing anything really new on here. Um, but we would have if we had gotten additional funding. So that's the intention of the plan, to make sure that you've involved everyone with the, with the infusion of funds that the school district um would have gotten.
Is there an annual, is this an annual process we have to go through, or?
I believe so, I think these are three-year plans, so I, I would imagine that we'd be revisiting this along the way, and I think that it, because it aligns with the strategic plan and the school improvement plans, that we would have been doing that anyway and making adjustments.
Well, Danielle, I just wanna thank you again for, you've put in an inordinate, inordinate amount of time on the reading program, the dyslexia troubleshooting, and so thank you.
Thank you.
It's a great plan.
Great. Um, we do need to vote on this so that you can submit documentation of our voting. So um, so could I ask for a motion to um vote in support of the um short form draft for the Student Opportunities Act?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Feel silent.
I'm muzzled.
You can always borrow this. Okay, great. Um, so the other action item we have on the agenda is a vote to approve overnight travel to the.
Yeah, so it's a quick update, that's, that, that conference is canceled.
Okay.
So, yeah, they were supposed to, our, our desperate.
This will be my first no.
Yeah.
Me too.
No, it's um, that con, that conference got canceled. I do wanna just say too, Julie, I'm sorry, but I, I, I forgot to uh add the school choice vote to the agenda. But it's, well, we have time, we'll, we'll just put it on at our next meeting. Cause I, I had put a, I think I had put a memo in, in the folder, but I, I just, I just forgot, I apologize, so, we have time.
Great.
That's it.
When is our next meeting?
April eighth.
It's about on the agenda, April eighth.
Yes, April eighth.
April eighth.
I know these things.
Yes, and, and just on that point, uh, April eighth will be after town elections. So um we typically reorganize ourselves. Um, so anybody who would like to be chairman, um, I'm very happy to relinquish the chairmanship. Um, so please consider that and um, and talk amongst yourselves, amongst ourselves. Um, think amongst ourselves about how we want to reorganize um in April.
It's gonna be a tough, uh, math, but we can do it.
Shut up.
You gonna go vote that? You gonna go vote?
Am I gonna vote?
Yeah?
I'm gonna vote.
Can you vote early in town elections?
No.
I don't think so.
I don't think so. Okay, so any other issues or correspondence or anything that's coming?
I have one.
Okay.
This has been my, the bee in my bonnet, which you guys know, cause I've reached out. We don't appear to have a social media policy for staff, as in um Facebook, Snapchat with students. I think we should have a policy, so I wanted to discuss that.
Because we are working on it at our digital literacy committee, and we have a draft reading going on.
Okay.
So we just did that on Monday, so we should be able to present a draft, I would say, at the April meeting for feedback.
All right.
So it's been underway throughout the school year. Um, we've taken a lot of input from our, our group on the, um, on the, but it's going to have um staff personal and professional guidelines for social media use.
Yay.
So, it's coming.
Great.
We're gonna put it out on Twitter.
I'll read it, I'll make an angry tweet. It's just because I read my tweets. And then just anecdotally, the cell phone use at the high school. Kids in classrooms, and it's just, you know, the teachers are having to. I, I don't know what we're gonna do about it, but kids are on their phones when they shouldn't be, and it's just not fair to the teachers. And it's gonna be an ongoing issue, and I don't know what the answer is, but it's super disrespectful to learning, so that's just my, the mom teacher in me.
We haven't heard that, so we'll definitely look into that, yeah.
Yeah.
From the teachers at least, yeah.
Anything else? Okay, good, public comment? Okay, okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Town meeting Saturday?
No, hell no, we're not going, we're not going.